Welcome, it's seven o'clock. The meeting will come to order. I am Grace Lesbrunz, Cascade Township Supervisor. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Castle.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Here.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Treasure Pierce.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Clerks Slater, here. Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Here. Thank you. Please rise if possible for the Pledge of Allegiance. Approval of agenda, is there discussion or emotion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
So, motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article four, presentations. We have none this evening. Article five, public comments. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the podium if you are able. And also, we'd like you to state your name and address for our record keeping. And if we have anyone virtually, we would love to hear from them as well.
If you are attending this meeting via Zoom and you would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand, or if you're using a phone, it's star nine. And we'll wait a few moments, Supervisor. Doesn't look like there are any Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Alright, well that concludes this portion of public comment. Article six, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a discussion or emotion?
I have a couple of comments that I'd like to make on this. Just comments at this time. One is I'd like to see the education request be removed from the consent agenda going forward. I just don't think they're common enough where they should be on that. They could be on their own heading. My second comment would be on the financial reports. We're actually reapproving the financial, the payables that were done two and three months ago. It seems to me that's a bit backwards. I would, I would rather see us a little more on top of that. Possibly reverse that process where we could review some of the invoices. If we had questions, we could do it before they were paid. And my third comment would be, obviously, I'm all for the firemen going for their annual training. I think that's great. I have questions about Manager Swayze's conference in Portland, Oregon. Our COVID is kicking up again. I just don't think it's wise to run off to Portland, Oregon when this conference is going to be in Cleveland, Ohio next year. So, I think I'd be more in favor of that. And those are my three comments.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda?
Support.
I'd just like to, I, the second point about the approval of invoices over two months later seems like a point worth visiting or reviewing. The only thing I'd like to say too, as far as the August 11th, 2021 Township Board minutes, the way it's written is accurate, but it just, that the supervisor denied information requested by a resident. I just wanted to clarify that resident was Mr. Chuck Whitley. He has the information, he just wanted it in a different format that would be, he'd be able to immediately access and then edit and tweak. So, the information is there, it's just the format requested, we denied that. Other than that, I have nothing else. Treasure Pierce?
I think we received a July 21 report segment, Ben.
They have not been on the board agenda yet, so I'm doing a final review of those.
They've been distributed.
Yes.
They've been done. So, we're less than a month away.
Thank you. So, that was a motion by, was that trustee, oh, Clerks Slater, seconded by?
Trustee Castle.
Thank you, trustee Castle, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article seven, financial actions. Is there a discussion or emotion?
Motion to approve, support.
It's a motion by trustee Castle, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article eight, unfinished business. We have none tonight, which brings us to article nine, new business. First item, 84, 2021, resolution for streetlight request at Whitneyville Avenue and 48th Street. Do we have anyone speaking on that tonight?
I can, I've excused Andrew for tonight, so I can cover this. So, we've received a request to install a light at the intersection of Whitneyville Avenue and 48th Street. The streetlight did not get relocated way in the past when 48th Street was realigned. And the intersection is dark. So, there's actually a streetlight about 160 feet to the northwest of this intersection. So, we submitted the request to have consumers do the review. The proposed streetlight will be placed on the new pole approximately 160 feet southeast of the existing light. The existing light will remain in place as it's costly to relocate or remove. So, we asked them to look at two different options. Option one, which is just to put in the new light, was $100. Option two, which was to relocate the light 160 feet to the southeast, was about $3,500. So, letters were sent to the property owners in the area. Staff heard from four of the six property owners. One homeowner was concerned about this disruption of access to his property. He was curious about the distance to his driveway. We ensured him that his driveway was far enough away that there would be no disturbance to the access. And the light is a significant distance away from that driveway as well. We had two property owners that were not concerned and in favor of the light. We had one property owner that didn't know if it was necessary and preferred a stoplight in that area. So, if the board chose to move forward with the installation of the light, our recommendation is that it not be added to the light special assessment district. Typically, lights at major intersections are paid for by the township as a whole, rather than partially special assessed back to the residents. As I mentioned, the cost for the installation is $100. I just note that this is a resolution.
Got a question.
Ben, I'm guessing that nowadays, when they're putting up the new streetlights, it's probably the latest ones, LEDs.
They will only install LED lights.
And as far as I can see, that's, that's a good choice.
Yeah. Also, significant cost savings and the technology has changed quite a bit. It used to be that the LEDs, you had problems controlling the light throw. Then technology's come quite a ways, ways since.
It seems as though the ones I've seen recently, they're actually thrown downward and not off to the side.
Okay. Good, thanks.
I make, I make a motion, I guess, to go ahead and approve the light at 48th and Whitneyville?
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve this resolution for streetlight request at Whitneyville and 48th. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Treasure Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Clerks Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Yes. Motion carried. Item 85, 2021, resolution to vacate the street adjacent to West Line of Lot 21 of the Arden Hills Platte.
You guys have seen this once before. This is a revised resolution, so the county found a problem with the legal description. So, they asked us to do a new one. But we've had our attorney take a look at this and he suggested that a new resolution be passed as well, since it's got new language in it. So, it's essentially the same thing. This is to accommodate the redevelopment of the old Pizza Hut. I guess what I call the Withy Hotel property for the Tommy's Car Wash, which I think you guys will see at the end of September. County Road Commission has already approved this new resolution as well. And so, they just asked that we approve the new resolution as well.
And just to clarify, this does rescind the previous resolution.
Does. There's a little statement in that as well.
Right. Thank you.
Is there discussion or emotion?
I make a motion to go ahead and approve this vacating of the non-existent street.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Castle, to approve the resolution to vacate the street adjacent to West Line of Lot 21 of the Arden Hills Platte. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Treasure Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Clerks Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Welcome.
Item 86, 2021, approval of annual pathway repairs.
So, it's that time of the year again. This is about, this might be a little bit earlier than we've done it in the past. But this is our annual pathway maintenance program, so you guys budgeted $100,000 this year. So, we thought what we were putting together was a package that would be about $100,000. That is what the Parks Committee recommended. You can see areas one, two, and three is what the Parks Committee took a look at. It's on your map here. The prices have come in much higher. We also added an area four after the Parks Committee made their recommendation. We got a resident call with a concern about one of the approaches to the bridge on Jonathan Woods, at Jonathan Woods and Butcher. And so, that is what area four is. So, all that said, this went out to bid. Our engineers put this bid package together. We received three bids, all from contractors that we have used before. We did break it up, so you could essentially choose, sort of pick these options from these different contractors. You have to pick from the same contractor. You couldn't pick area one from one contractor and area two from another. But for instance, if you only wanted to do area three, maybe you would pick Caterburg or Hay, since they were the low bidder on that segment. But if we wanted to do areas three and four, you might want to pick lawns of distinction, since that's the low bid. So, that is the proposal that you have for you. You can pick, you know, whatever you would like there in terms of how much money we want to spend. The way the contract was written up, again, one of the reasons why we did it a little bit early was to hopefully get better prices, to be flexible and give them time to fit into their schedule. The projects would have to be substantially completed by November 5th with final completion by December 3.
Just going to ask, well, this is obviously over budget for obvious reasons that we have more repairs than we thought we'd need. Does the balance come from the pathway fund?
Right, it's the, it's.
It'll come out of the general fund. And we've got sufficient funds to cover it. Right?
And just to follow up on that question, all these areas, I think we've had residents talk about some of the pathways. I forget whether this is included in them, some of the ones that Scott and Solcom mentioned before as needing repair. Are, would these four areas include his comments?
I don't, I haven't heard from Scott Van Solcom about what sections, but you're right, we do get some calls from residents. I think Grace, you got a long email from a resident that you shared. So, I wouldn't say that it would include every area that we've gotten a comment from, but what we do is we have our, our grounds crew who drives the entire pathway multiple times a week. You know, kind of use their eyes, what they see, along with the comments that we get. And then engineer and I walk those segments to try to really build a whole area, rather, you don't want to just do little spots here, 25 feet here and there. So, try to build these segments to get the most that we can get out of those repairs. So, no, it's a long-winded answer, but it's going to cover a lot of the areas that we saw that needed to be repaired.
So, they, these areas really need it, they, they're the worst.
I, I would say the top priority, in our opinion, is probably area two. The area down on Thornapple River Drive by Shagbar. That's what I would say is the top priority.
That's one that's, that was.
Oh, is that what?
Also, we did have people in here speak about area four, which is the one over at Jonathan Woods, the coach, the bridge. And since the pathways are, number one, one of the gems that everybody talks about in their township. And number two, it's a safety factor, I would say all of them should be taken care of, including the staff recommendation for area four.
Mr. Peterson, can you explain just a little background for myself or any new members or the public? Yes, just the process of, is it the same amount budgeted every year for repairs? Or I've gotten, I think, two new emails this week about complaining about places on the pathways that need to be repaired. I haven't sent those to you yet. I will. But just for a little background.
Yeah. You guys have increased that amount that you've done for maintenance every year. It's in your budgeting process. I think it was just a few years ago, maybe back in 16. It might have been around $50,000. So, you guys have been steadily progressing the amount that you budgeted for repairs.
When did the Parks Committee approve these? Or recommend these? Do you remember?
Was that about a month ago?
Can't remember. But it fairly recently.
Recently, very recently.
Make a motion that we do all four. And I guess the cost savings would be to go with lawns of distinction if we do all four. So, I'd make the recommendation that we do that.
Mantra Swayze, did you want to make a comment?
I just wanted to add on to that. When the, the current village was designed, it was designed to eventually kick up the annual maintenance to about $150,000, I think. The idea was to kind of ramp that up slowly. But the money and amortization of that fund is there to continue to do more and more maintenance as we, as we move along.
I'll second Jim's motion.
It's a motion by trustee Castle, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve all four areas for repairs of the pathways and use lawns of distinction to fulfill that contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 087, 2021, approval of outdoor gathering space permit for MSA Foundation at the MSA Fieldhouse.
Okay, so this is a outdoor gathering permit related to the charitable gaming recognition resolution that you approved at the last meeting. So, this is related to that same event, but separate process because they're expecting approximately 300 people. They have to apply the township for an outdoor gathering permit as well. The fundraiser will be on September 14th at the MSA Fieldhouse property at 5435 28th Street Court Southeast. It'll be from 5:30 until 7:30, provided the documentation that they provided to us in your packet, they seem to be very organized. We got all the information that we needed and the only recommendation from staff is that they apply for and receive any necessary permits for temporary structures from the building department. If it's approved by the township board, we'll review the requirements with the applicant and they by all the recommendations. There's no financial implications for approving the outdoor gathering permit.
Is there discussion or emotion?
We've had this before at MSA, haven't we? Seems like they had events there.
I don't recall approving an outdoor gathering permit. It's not to say they don't have one, so sometimes we find out about events and then tell them, you know, hey, if you're going to have this next year, you really need to have a permit as well, so.
And it looks like it's early in the evening, so certainly the residential area around them isn't going to be affected that much. I make a motion to approve the, the outdoor gathering permit for MSA.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the outdoor gathering space permit for MSA Foundation at the MSA Fieldhouse. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 88, 2021, approval of the MERS defined benefit plan and defined contribution plan adoption agreement addendums. Mantra Swayze?
So, we've received a request from MERS to consider the attached or enclosed adoption agreement addendums. So, the addendum, I really intended to restate the plan provisions that have already been approved by the township board, not to add or subtract any terms or conditions of the existing plans. Because of that, staff drafted the addendums to be filled in to represent the current plans as they were adopted by the township board. And MERS has indicated they're requesting all of the participating units to do this in order to bring all the plan provisions into their new format. So, essentially, it's what happened is over the past 34 years, they've had different kinds of agreements that have that. And they want everybody to have the same format now. So, they're just asking everybody to approve what they currently have in the same format. So, we reviewed the addendums with the Personnel and Finance Committee at their August meeting and reiterated the forms were completed to align with the current benefit calculations for each plan. So, should be noted that the defined benefit plan remains closed to new participants. The defined contribution plan is the one that's open to new participants. We currently have 22 active employees in the DB program. And the Personnel Finance Committee did recommend the township board approve the addendums. Since the addendum restate the current plan provisions, there should be no change in the financial considerations for the township for the retirement plans.
Thank you.
So, as far as the employees go, there's really no difference for them. Cool. It works for me.
It's more of a MERS housekeeping item.
I make a motion to approve the MERS addendums and agreements.
I support.
A motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Castle, to approve the MERS defined benefit plan and defined contribution plan adoption agreement addendums. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 89, 2021, it's for the fire station number two outbuilding.
So, earlier this year, the board approved a contract with Progressive AE to provide architectural and engineering services for an outbuilding at Fire Station Two. So, when that was approved, there was really a two-pronged purpose for this building. One was that it would be a short-term benefit. The facility would provide the necessary storage of station one equipment that would be displaced during the construction of the new station number one building. And then the long-term facility would provide storage for off-season reserve equipment. So, the project was recently bid in the following categories. The metal building, the earthwork and site utilities, the plumbing, the HVAC systems, and the electrical. Bids were due in late July and tallied. And despite receiving multiple bids in all the categories, the price is significantly higher than originally anticipated. So, based on the received bids, the cost of the building, including contingencies and architectural engineering services, is just over $621,000. For comparison, the original construction range for the building, including contingencies and escalation, was between 452 and 507,000. So, that represents an 18% increase over the original high estimated budget. So, not even the average, just the, the high one. So, I included a whole host of items in your packet for review, including all of the individual bids that came in for all of the work. So, since the design for Fire Station Number Two Outbuilding has begun, the township has been able to tentatively acquire additional temporary fire station number one space at the airport. So, originally, the idea was that there was one suite available and we were going to utilize that for temporary operations while construct, uh, station number one is being constructed. In the meantime, a second suite right, right next to it came open. So, right now, the lease that's in the hands of the lawyers for both entities actually includes both of those spaces. And by obtaining both of those spaces, we're able to temporarily store all of the station number one equipment at the new temporary station number one. So, that's eliminated the need for the short-term solution for the outbuilding. Given the cost escalation over, escalation over the original estimates, which we think is due to unstable and elevated construction costs based on the pandemic and the elimination of the storage space needed to facilitate the station number one project, staff recommended to the Public Safety Advisory Committee at their August meeting that the board reject all the bids and essentially shelve the project at this point. So, we feel that during the Fire Station Number One project, the township can adore addition, uh, explore additional storage options integrated into the station number one project. And we've already done some brainstorming about that and trustee Nordic's been a big help on that. We appreciate that. So, if that proves difficult or inefficient, the township can always revisit the project at a later date. You know, our contract says that we basically own everything that's done now. So, the project's essentially been designed. We can take those plans in the future time, we can decide to bid it out again if we think that's the ultimate solution. Hopefully, in a bidding climate that's a little bit better than the one now. So, rejecting the bids has no financial implications for the township. We'll know that we've invested to this point $33,400 in the project, which is basically the initial engine, architectural engineering work and then the bidding process as well. The bidding portion of that was about $5,000. So, if you did this again, essentially, the bidding portion of it is the expenses that we would have to incur again. So, with that, the staff and the PSAT committee is recommending the board reject all the bids for the Fire Station Number Two outbuilding project.
I'll make a motion that we reject all those bids.
I'll support.
I got some comments.
I just, go ahead. I was going to thank Timmy, he did a great job this morning. I asked him about this at, at the Governance Committee and he explained it really well. I think the only thing that is unsure of is that extra building at the airport until we get it. But assuming we do, this makes the most sense because, as I understand it, the committee already looked at the plans. If we have to, we can expand the Fire Station One easily enough that we won't need outbuilding altogether. Is that right?
Good chance.
Okay.
Yep. We looked at it and even the fire department's unsure exactly what they're going to need after the station is built. And this may be altered somewhat. There may be some grants available in your future if they incorporate some training facilities into the building, as the chief wanted to do. So, going down the road here a little bit, kicking this can, we'll pick it back up sometime down the road. Makes sense.
Great job. Trustee Nordhook, thanks. Who seconded that motion?
I did.
Go ahead, Tom.
Oh, go ahead, Tom. You need a second.
Okay.
I second, yep.
That's a motion by trustee Nordhook to reject all bids for Fire Station Number Two Outbuilding project at this time, supported by trustee McDonald. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Article 10, public comments. So, anyone wishing to speak in person or virtually is welcome. And again, please state your name and address for our records.
Once again, to those who are listening and watching the, the meeting via Zoom, if you could please raise your hand on Zoom and I will go ahead and allow you to speak. If you are joining us by phone, please press star nine. And I'll wait a few moments. We have one. It's Jeff Carpenter is what it's listed as, but I'll go ahead and unmute.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
We can, yes.
Excellent, thank you. I was having a mic problem there. My name is Jeff Carpenter, reside at 5016 Sequoia Drive Southeast, Grand Rapids, Michigan, 49512. Just real quick, I'm speaking on behalf of the Cascade Thornapple River Association. Notice that there's the public hearing coming up, or at least announced for two weeks from tonight. And at the previous meetings, it was indicated that the public notices in the Grand Rapids Press and, and the paper notices to property owners would be going out in a timely fashion. And as of a few moments ago, I don't believe that's happened. And I just wanted to encourage the board and the township staff to ensure that that happens in a timely fashion, as we're only 14 days away from that meeting. And that's my comment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mantra Swayze, why don't we address Mr. Carpenter's concerns in the manager comment portion?
Sure. So, the newspaper advertisements are scheduled for Sunday and Tuesday. And the direct mailing to the residents will be going out Friday morning.
Is that timely?
It is.
Anyone else wishing to comment?
Supervisor Lesbrunz, no one else has raised. Supervisor Lesperance, no one else has raised their hand.
Thank you. Turning next, article eleven, manager comments. Manager Swayze?
Great, just a couple of things I wanted to update the board with. So I guess I'll start with the bad news first. So we've been working with Comcast on the Alaska Ridge Internet project. And the latest phone conversation we've had with Comcast, the price of that project has magically gone from around seventy thousand dollars to around two hundred thousand dollars.
In what timeframe? When did they give us the six, the seventy thousand dollar estimate?
We have, the, the last communication in writing from them was in late September of two thousand and twenty, where they confirmed it multiple times. So we told them they need to provide us, you know, in writing, the estimate exactly how it got to where it is, so we can begin to dissect that. Internet for twelve residences for twenty two hundred thousand dollars seems completely ridiculous. So we are waiting for that. Obviously, with the Township Board, you know, approving that previously, we're gonna delve deep into making sure that that happens. But starting at a two hundred thousand dollar price tag, A, that's not what the board approved, but B, it's just really not, not reasonable. So we have notified the Alaska Ridge residents, or a resident that's kind of keeping everybody updated, letting them know that we are continuing to look at that. And hopefully, we'll have some better news for you in the meetings.
Can I ask a question? Did the county, we had a finance committee meeting, not the last one, but the one before that. We discussed, the county may get on board with some funds to increase internet. Are they doing it, not doing it?
So the county, I had a chance to go down to a meeting with the county's broadband committee about two weeks ago, and they are very interested in developing a program to assist in broadband expansion. And it sounds like they are hoping to model it on essentially what I'd call the road commission model, where there would be a local unit contribution and then a county contribution, or possibly three-way, resident, county, township. So they're, they're, they're number one priority for their, our funds, where they got a hundred and fifty seven million dollars, is broadband internet. However, it's clear that they're not there yet, so everything seems to be in the discussion stage. But that might be a fund for us to, to tap into. They are also, part of that committee is representatives from all the internet providers. So a representative from Comcast sits on there, a representative from AT&amp;T sits on there, representative from Charter sits on there. So I'm hoping that there may be some, that might be an opportunity for some pressure. You know, if the county's going to say, hey, we're gonna throw you guys a lot of money to give our residents some broadband, you guys have to give us reasonable prices. I'm hoping that, that pressure will, will help that project.
Not, not being a lawyer, but knowing that utilities are somewhat regulated, is there any relief that we might be able to get through the MPSC, the Public Service Commission?
So certainly something we can ask. The problem is, is that internet is not a regulated utility.
Oh, okay.
So if we, if they were asking us to provide cable services to their houses, I would say absolutely we would, we would rest on that. But of course, the broadband internet lobbying is huge and has big reach. And as of yet, the state has not brought in broadband internet as regulated.
Well, yeah, both services run on the same cable. So it's a matter of semantics.
And money. Treasure appears.
Does that remember our resolution to put a cap on?
So it did.
Seventy thousand.
If I'm remembering right, the, the Comcast broadband lines go point two miles up to the nearest Alaska.
The houses immediately south to the area have, have internet, so. And I'm not a internet guru by any stretch of the imagination, but it, it does seem like it's a bit of gouging, so.
And it comes right after they receive millions of dollars in grant, grant money for, to expand internet access.
Very disappointing.
Very disappointing.
And to kind of echo Ben's comments here, previously being an engineer and a construction manager for a major utility company in Michigan, I would agree with Ben that this is nothing less than reaching down a deep pocket.
Doesn't look good for Comcast.
So on the good news section, if you've driven around Cascade at all the past couple of weeks, you know that street construction is hot and heavy. So we've got the Beard Farms area completed. They're working on finishing up the thirty third, thirty sixth street area, the foremost industrial park area, and about halfway through Centennial Park right now. So we'll have an infrastructure committee meeting next week. We'll talk about the savings that we were able to accomplish through the bidding process. See if that's something that we want to invest in a little bit more work coming up. So we'll have a, an infrastructure committee will meet about that next week. And if they have a recommendation, they'll come in front of the board on the eighth. So that is good news. Final piece of good news, I've talked about this a couple of times already, but I'm really proud of them. So Supervisor Lesperance received a certificate of achievement for our assessing departments today. Not only did they pass their AMR, but they are record, recognized for outstanding achievement of receiving a perfect score in the two thousand and twenty one audit of minimum assessing requirements review. So again, I just want to send some kudos to them. It's not very often we get to tout our assessing department, so I think we're gonna work on a little social media post to kind of give them some, some kudos out there. But if you do see those people in the office, you know, their work is thankless sometimes. They're, they don't get to, you know, open parks or fix streets or do anything like that. So do mention to them, good job for, a job well done.
Thank you. Article twelve, board member comments. Treasure appears.
I want to congratulate the board on, this has to be a record under the Lesperance era of shortness of meaning.
Why only the Lesperance area, treasure appears? I have a. Clerk Slater?
Just want to remind everyone about the Metro Crew's warm-up tomorrow down in Cascade Village, front of the bowling warehouse. Sanders, I'm not here to push it, but there's gonna be all the, you know, great cars from the late twentieth century and a great band. Soul Syndicate will be there, so, and food trucks.
And potholes.
And what?
And potholes.
Yes.
I just have a question on the mailing going out for the Thornapple River assessment. I had asked if a survey would be going out, just to get an updated response from all the people. A lot of that information is like four or five years old. Just a simple yes or no, are you in favor of it? I have no skin in the game, whatever way that comes back, I'm in. So I, I just want to know if there's a survey going out to the residents with that mailing.
So that's the plan, it's the design. I'm waiting for final confirmation from the attorney that that's just okay to do. Since we've had a couple of missteps on this assessment process, I'd rather have confirmation from them before I do it. But the intention is to, is to put that out there.
Thank you.
Trustee Shipley?
Now? I always stand up. You're a regular member here, love to see you here. Thanks for being here. Bring your neighbors next time, I keep asking you to do that. And anybody out in TV land, thank you for being there too. I was gonna say something also, I forgot what it was.
You're done, you only get thirty seconds.
I'm done.
Any other comments? I want to comment on the airport lease for Suites One and Two, just an update. I know Chief Majors and some other people on our behalf have been working hard, and the execution of that lease between the township and the airport, for the, so that the fire station, so that the fire department can temporarily be out, out there while we build Fire Station One, has been pushed back several months. But for the record, or what I have, what I have heard is that as of now, the last step or where we're at, on August eleventh, we approved the lease that we received from the airport and sent it back to them on August eleventh. And we have yet to hear anything from them as far as a response. But verbally, over the last few months, we've consistently heard from the airport that they don't see any problems or issues, that it should be just a formality, and, and we're all, all set to go ahead. So because time is ticking, we look forward to hearing back from the airport. But hopefully, as they've said, no anticipated problems.
Why do I see hostage in front of me? Never mind.
Hopefully you don't.
Move to adjourn, support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to adjourn. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you for coming.
This is a record for you, congratulations. That's my deal.
If we can, like the.
It says updates available.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, don't get used to this.